Okay, I'm -- welcome to the City of Eugene's City Council Work Session for February 11, 2015. I'm Claire Syret, City Council President, sitting in, substituting for Mayor Piercy, who's away on council business. And we are going to be going into executive session. So I'm going to -- the mayor and council will now meet in executive session to negotiate real property transactions. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we may return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We'll now go into executive session. And back on camera, and City Manager?
Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Craig to finish us out on the topic of funding for parks operations and maintenance, parks and recreation.
Great. Well, thank you for this opportunity to return to council regarding maintenance funding for parks. Last fall, the council heard a report about the State of Eugene's Parks and Recreation Facilities, and I'm just here to present a very brief verbal presentation on bringing back some funding options for park maintenance. This report that you heard last fall included information about ways the Parks and Recreation System provides tangible benefits to the community, such as access to parks, pools, gyms, sports fields, community centers, natural areas, and trails, how these places enable health and well-being, and how the green spaces found there clean our local air and water. We all know these benefits are inherently priceless. Nevertheless, a recent study by the Earth Economics Group showed how the Parks and Recreation System provides over $42 million annually in economic value to the community from both the natural benefits the system's green spaces provide the city and through increased property values from the way parks make Eugene a more desirable place to live and visit. You also heard significant challenges facing this system, such as aging infrastructure with deferred maintenance, the impacts of illegal camping, vandalism, and graffiti, and how resources to operate and maintain the system have languished while park acreage and community uses of the system have increased. The report also provided examples of what we're doing each day to try and meet these challenges, how staff from both Parks and Recreation Divisions work very hard to deliver high-quality services and have made significant strides in being more efficient through working smarter, utilizing technology, building partnerships, and using more volunteers. And despite these efforts, much of the system has gone into decline or isn't fully meeting community needs. After that report in the fall, council unanimously stated that we need to find new ways to support the Parks and Recreation System in order to better meet the needs of the community now and in the future, and requested staff to return with revenue options to sustainably fund Parks and Recreation Facilities. There is a very high level of public support for Parks and Recreation here in Eugene, and the council's decision to seek sustainable funding for Parks and Recreation Facilities reflects this high level of public support. The AIS you have described several funding options for your consideration to hopefully connect the level of public support Eugene has for Parks and Recreation with a funding strategy to improve the physical assets of the system. A comprehensive funding strategy would include a combination of both short- and long-term options. Short-term options are those which can be implemented within the year. Long-term options require more prep time and are likely several years out to implement. The long-term options address the question of how we sustainably fund the physical assets of parks and recreation facilities in a way that will better meet the needs of residents into the future. You saw in the State of the Parks and Rec Report last fall how most of our current recreation facilities were built in the '60s and '70s, and that these facilities clearly do not meet the community's recreational needs of 2015 and much less the needs of the future. You also saw how we have been able to acquire property to add acres to the park system, but because operating and maintenance funds have not kept pace with these additions, many acquired lands still sit idle with no parkland developed yet. We believe identifying funding options for recreational facilities and future developed parks can best be addressed as we reengage the community through the Parks and Recreation System Plan over the next year and a half. As we learn more from the community about what they want and need from their Parks and Recreation System and what they are willing to pay for future improvements, we will be in a better position to provide council with specific recommendations about how to fund future plans for Parks and Recreation Facilities. The shorter-term revenue options presented in the AIS would address the immediate needs of deteriorating conditions in developed parks, which, as you heard last fall and described in a report attached with the AIS, are the result of years of budget reductions, deferred maintenance, and growing illicit activities. Some significant issues that need to be funded sooner than later include maintenance and repair of things like placement equipment, park lighting, hard surfaces such as pathways, ADA ramps, plazas, retaining walls, and parking lots. We'd like to reopen the three restrooms that were closed last year and restore custodial frequencies, provide more comprehensive graffiti abatement for paths and parks, and improve water quality protections near waterways and parks and natural areas from trash, debris, and hazardous waste associated with illegal camping. This would mean stepping up cleanups and increasing the monitoring and enforcement of no camping rules in our parks. As highlighted in a parks condition assessment conducted over the last five years, more than half of our developed parks are now in decline. In order to stop a steeper, faster decline over the next five years, we need to stabilize the infrastructure and then adequately fund ongoing maintenance. The time to do this is now, or it's going to cost us much more later. What we are describing is a phased approach to developing a sustainable funding strategy for Parks and Recreation Facilities, a strategy that first addresses the immediate needs of developed parks and that later we are able to return to council with longer-term funding options once we've heard more from the public through the Parks and Recreation System Plan. So for today's work session, we are recommending that council identify one of the short-term options to improve funding for park operations and maintenance. And I'll close there, and again, thank you for this opportunity to present this information.
Right. So first up is Councilor Clark.
Glenn will be -- we're tracking him down if he has questions.
My question is only tangential to the discussion. It has to do with a part of it, but not -- shall we choose between these options? So I'll wait until Glenn gets here, and I can ask all my questions at once.
Okay. I'll put you back in the queue when he comes back. Councilor Taylor?
Thank you. First, I'd like you to clarify for the public that parks bond money cannot be used for maintenance.
Correct.
Correct. So we have to find another source if we're going to do anything, because that can only be used for acquisition. The camping, I know it goes on. I see it every morning when I take an early morning walk, people seeking shelter, but it seems like this is related to finding a place for people to be. I don't know. I think it's -- is damaging to the park to have people camping there, especially by the streams, but you tell them to go away, and where are they going to go? That's the problem with that. I think if we use the stormwater fees, does that include -- involve raising stormwater rates, I assume?
Yes.
Of those two things you have up, I would favor the local option levy. And from your long-term things, I am absolutely opposed to user fees. I think that we all pay for parks so that everybody, people who can't afford to do other for themselves, can use them. I think it's really -- I saw a really sad thing out at Mount Piska where they now do charge a fee to get in. There was a man there with a family of children, and he saw that I was leaving. He asked if he could have my pass, but I didn't have a day pass. I only have a season pass, so I couldn't give it to him. But he couldn't go for a walk with his children because he didn't have -- at that time, it was $3. Now it's $4, I think. But I don't think we should exclude anybody from using parks because they can't afford to pay a fee. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Betty. We'll go back to Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that you have a longer-term plan coming. I would say that if we need to and can make some correlation that makes sense with stormwater fees, I'd be at least willing to have that discussion. I don't like the idea very well, but I'll tell you, I don't believe for one single second that the people of Eugene are going to vote in favor of a parks levy, a library levy, and a county auto license fee, all three of them. It's just not going to happen. And so for us to ask for any manner of short-term operational levy, I think, would fail at the ballot. I don't think that's a worthwhile idea. I'd like to see us get sooner on a longer-term idea. Now, I saw your long-term option list at the end there talk about private donations. One of the things I mentioned last time, I spoke with our -- about a little bit, the foundation folks, and I sincerely believe that gives us our best long-term option. I think we have a bigger question about the long-term nature of our parks. Either we're going to form a special district and make it a whole other separate thing and kind of guarantee some long-term security to it, or we're going to treat how we're doing this differently. My idea the other day was to work with an endowment fund with the Parks Foundation and use part of that earned revenue and that private opportunity as a supplemental stream for maintenance of the assets we have. We have quite a list of other things we need to develop and purchase based on our planning. Isn't that correct?
Right.
So we can't afford to maintain what we have, and we have an obligation to develop more and buy more for which we have a diminishing supply of money, right? Okay. That doesn't -- we need, I think, a better long-term answer that looks at this more robustly. That's why I suggested that we partner with the university. When we were having the conversations around the rain thing downtown and our participation, I spoke with that gentleman from the university talking about our desire to have the city and the city's Parks Foundation work more closely with the university and their experience with capital campaigns and with endowment funds so that we might endow our parks appropriately for the long term. I only have 14 seconds left, but I have further questions around SDCs and our development and purchase stuff.
I've got you back in the queue.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you. Well, reading the AIS through, it's pretty obvious that we're being steered to support amended stormwater fee because we see all the negative reasons why we shouldn't do the other things. And I really, you know, first of all, to really be talking -- I don't think we should make any decisions today, certainly. But, you know, we're having this conversation in advance of the budget forecast and the budget committee meetings, and so I don't think we had to go too deeply into it. I don't think it's a good idea to amend the stormwater fee. The logic seems to be, well, it rains on the parks, the water flows through the parks, therefore, we can charge, we can raise the stormwater fee to maintain our parks. That seems to be the basic logic of using this option. You could use that same logic to say, well, it rains on streets and causes branches to come out of trees. Why don't we increase the stormwater fee to take care of our streets? We could use the same logic. Go ahead.
Actually, in this proposal, it's to expand stormwater services, the use of stormwater service fees to include park maintenance, so we're not trying to make a direct connection between the operation and maintenance of parks with stormwater necessarily. We're trying to expand that fee definition out to allow all operations and maintenance of parks to be included in this fee.
Well, I, you know, the one reason I have a kind of problem with it is because a couple weeks ago, we approved taking $135,000 from Public Works for the next four years to build 9,000 square feet, fourth story on City Hall. And so, you know, we weakened the position of Public Works to take care of the parks and streets already. And this is kind of like, I see this as, probably not conscious, but I see this as backfilling that hole that we made, and then we have to increase it really to get any benefit from it. So it seems like we have to increase it quite a bit, and the only -- another reason I have a problem with it is these other options, like, you know, a tax levy and a bond measure require voter participation. This one doesn't. The city council makes the decision to go ahead and fiddle with the definition of stormwater service, and then it's up to the manager's discretion to set the rate increases. And I mean, there would be public input, but there is no public power to approve or disapprove of any rate increases. And I see why, I understand why we're focusing on this. I just don't think it's the way to go because it's regressive. You bill each eWeb, pay each eWeb. Doesn't matter whether they're billionaires or living below the poverty level. Everybody has to pay the same rate every month. And by the way, do we, are there any suggestions of what kind of dollars we're talking here every year?
My understanding that the rate is based off of the size of the lot and the water usage, and that what we're talking about for every 1% increase in the rate of the stormwater fee, you're looking on an average home in Eugene about 12 cents a month for every 1%.
For how much for a year? What's that going to raise per year?
So 12 times 12, so a little over a dollar?
Well, okay. But this is what I'm saying. If I imagine that it's perhaps, you know, a majority would say, go ahead and work on this idea, and if they do, I think it's premature personally. Maybe do it after the budget sessions.
Want a second round?
I'll need a second round.
Sorry. Councilor Pauling?
Thank you. This just may be way out there, but have we had any discussions with the River Road Parks District and to form an overall Parks District? And if so, can you do like a 30-second recap of those conversations?
I haven't been involved directly with those conversations, but the city has been involved with River Road quite a bit, and I know that our Library, Recreation, Cultural Services Director, Renee Grooby, has been in contact with River Road. And we also expect to be meeting with River Road Parks and Recreation District in the next few months to talk about our long-term planning for the Parks and Recreation System and that process over the next year and a half or so.
Just to add a little bit on the idea of a Parks District, as it currently is talked about, I'm not in favor of creating a Parks District for a number of reasons. But one, essentially, you're taxing the taxpayer again, and so it's not as if it's free. So they're actually paying more for the additional services. And one of the advantages, as some have mentioned, is you potentially have a steady income stream, assuming they're still willing to increase their revenue proportionately. One advantage of the stormwater fee, and we talked about this a couple of years ago, is you actually also are creating a steady stream of income from those same taxpayers to pay for the same maintenance as you would as if you're creating a district. You just wouldn't need an additional governance structure and some of those kinds of things. So we're happy to talk more about it, but we have been in conversation with River Road around a variety of topics to include that.
Yeah. The options that we've got for short term, it's not looking very good. You know, as far as amending the stormwater fee, the AIS says the council could choose to hold a public hearing on the revised ordinance. It should be, it should read the council shall hold a public hearing if we're going to go that route. You know, as far as things going to a public vote versus the council making the decision, I mean, we've voted as a council to spend millions of dollars without going to a vote for it. Good example is the EMX. So I'm comfortable with the council making the decision on this. I do have some concerns about the rates and the control of those rates, you know, in the long term. The way it's structured now, the rates can be changed by administrative order, and I'm just not real comfortable with doing it that way. But I would definitely encourage that we have a public hearing if this is the route we're going to take, that we do have the public hearing on this before any action.
Councilor Fur.
Thank you. I think kind of building off what George is talking about, I think for me, this is an issue of trust and good faith. We're very sensitive to the conversation we had before about stormwater, that our intentions may be honorable, but I don't think necessarily the public perceives us all the time as operating in good faith, whether that's justified or not. And so having the authority to change how much money the people in Eugene have to pay for something without them having input on it, whether through a vote or through public process, I think is of great concern to them. And we've worked very hard to establish good trust. I think our street bond measures are an example of us demonstrating good faith and trust. But I think if we were going to go down the stormwater route, it would need to be with sufficient assurances that this was not going to be something that had the potential to be abused. And so building in the appropriate safeguards. I think having the public hearing is good, but it's not going to take the place of somebody saying, I want to be able to vote on it. So if you're going to remove that as an option, I think you need to build in sufficient safeguards to make people feel that they can have faith that this won't be used as an opportunity to create a secret revenue stream. And so whether it's capping fees or requiring city council to approve fee changes or any other mechanisms you need to put in place to assure that this is being done in good faith, I think would be absolutely essential. So even that this might vary from other authority that the city manager has, because of the unique nature of our need to create trust around this kind of a change, just as we did with the street bond, build some mechanisms in there to show that we're consciously saying, we don't want this to be just a secret fundraising opportunity for us. We want, we're consciously and more than willing to build mechanisms into it to do that. And I don't see that as a real problem. If anything, I think it demonstrates our willingness to control ourselves when we do something like this, especially if it's not going to involve a vote. And like Mike, I agree. I think with so many things on the ballot, it would be very difficult to try to pass an operational levy, a serial levy. Maybe another time, another place, and maybe that might be something to consider later on. Around special districts as a long-term conversation, I actually have been to a couple of meetings with River Road because I used to work at a special district. So they called on me with my perspective on what I thought about that. And the first thing I told them was that it may be very desirable to the residents of River Road and that area. It would be a vote that would have to be taken by the entire city. So you would have to very clearly demonstrate a benefit to the entire city and not just the people in River Road. And so if you wanted to go down the special district road, it would be one where you wouldn't just do it because the River Road wanted it. You would need to be able to do it because it was a demonstrated benefit for the entire area, and that's a different conversation. It's a whole different conversation. Doesn't mean it's impossible, but you do have to talk about it in a very different and expansive way.
Thank you. I put myself in the queue. Thanks for the work and the presentation. You know, I really want to see us to be able to bring our maintenance and repair of our parks back up to the level that keeps our parks safe, attractive, usable. And we have parks sitting undeveloped in neighborhoods all over town that don't have sufficient access to parks right now, and getting those developed is really overdue. And we haven't been developing them because we wouldn't be able to maintain them. So, you know, we're in this vicious cycle. I had a couple of specific questions. Unlike some of the other fees, you didn't try to put an estimate of what the stormwater fee might bring in for parks maintenance. Is there some estimate for that?
Got a slide right here that can show a little bit at the bottom. So for every 1% rate increase, it generates about $150,000 of revenue, and that 1% again increase equates to about 12 cents per month on a medium-sized home here in Eugene.
Okay. So that could be a potential starting point. And then, and then it's also not clear to me, not only how would that rate be calculated, how much of the revenue would be dedicated to storm, excuse me, to parks and open space? Or is it just parks? That's another question. So how would that be worked out?
You can probably answer that.
Well, it would be for developed parks.
Developed parks.
For the operation and maintenance of developed parks. And as far as the percentage of the rate, I think that what, as far as the accountability piece, I mean, by identifying some of these high-priority project lists and the costs associated with those, we would intend to try to apply whatever rate increase occurred to solve those problems that we listed, so.
Great. That's a good strategy. I was going to make a similar suggestion. You know, so I agree with some of what's already been said around the table. We're already looking potentially at putting a library levy on the ballot and asking voters to consider that, to fill that funding gap. The county has their measure, and we haven't seen our budget yet. It may look better this year, but we are still climbing out of a hole. So I think we still need to think about both long-term and short-term strategies. I could support the stormwater fee adjustment as a short-term strategy, but then I do think we need to pursue long-term strategies and not rely on that solely to fill the gaps. And, you know, we, there has been discussion out in the community about a Parks District. There's this idea of a private endowment, but none of those have really been vetted by this council sufficiently enough for us to say, yeah, those are the directions we want to go. If we did do the stormwater idea or any, I think, any fee, whether it was a levy or whatever, creating a list of projects or parks that need the work and being very clear about what the estimated costs are for those, and having that be publicized and publicizing, you know, should the fees pass, the completion of those projects so the community can see their dollars being put to work in the community. And since we haven't seen our budget for this year, I'm not ready to rush to a decision one way or the other, but those are my general thoughts in terms of ways that we might go. So I've got Mike back in the queue.
Thank you. You know, after thinking about it a little bit and talking about it a little more and listening, I have to say, I kind of want to back out some of the preliminary support I gave to the idea of stormwater. I'm thinking that's less of a good idea the more we talk about it. I think it's a Band-Aid on a much bigger wound. We have, I think, a need to get into more aggressive solutions sooner. I understand that we're going to have a budget that we have to develop in a couple of months, and we have a very significant short-term need, but I don't know that that's going to cut it, and I don't think it's a good idea. Some of the things that have been an interesting part of this discussion, I too have been asked by the folks in River Road many times, have met with them, you know, on several occasions, and heard their talk, you know, about the, why it's so attractive to them to create a Parks District. And I think that the largest underlying reason is they don't, they don't really understand clearly, or I don't know if trust is the right word, but they don't have a clear vision, nor frankly, do we, of our long-term vision of parks in our community and how we're going to accomplish that. And I appreciate that you're working on that plan. I think that's good. I think it'll make that process easier and the likelihood of a special district less likely. And I think it's a very bad idea for us to have a special district. But I know we can't solve it all today, but I really have this urge to broaden the conversation out to the bigger picture as quickly as we can because we have a bigger problem than that. I'd like you, if you would, to kind of correct or verify some of the detailed pieces I mentioned just a little bit ago about our SDC list. Are we 5% through that list, 6%, 8%? Are we 5% through that list, 6%, 8% through our S D C pros plan list?
I don't have an exact percentage.
Anybody got a guess for me there?
But I can tell you, I can tell you that over the last 10 years, we've spent about $14 million in S D Cs on capital projects throughout the city. I've got a list of those top, most significant projects. And we've also spent some S D C money on rehabilitation of some parks that, as you know, was altered about five years ago or so.
And I appreciate that. But we're, anybody have, anybody have a fraction of an idea of where we are through that list? Because I was given a copy of it once and I, at the time, about a year ago, and it was about 5% at the time. So in any event, you've brought up the key subject that I wanted Glenn here for. About five or six years ago, Alan and I had a fairly significant discussion at the table about whether there was a nexus between commercial and industrial land and demand on parks. And thus, we created a parks S D C that we charged to commercial and industrial lands when they're. Now, that's something we've been collecting for years. Do I have that right? And that's because the council decided there is such a nexus. When we were having our discussion about the expansion of industrial lands the other day, I was told there isn't a nexus between demand for parks and the use by commercial and industrial, and thus, we're not adding to the industrial base based on park demand.
Counsel Clark, you're at the end of your time.
Thank you. Can you clarify for me whether that nexus exists or doesn't exist?
I can't clarify for you what was said five or six years ago or what was said today because I wasn't, I think it, either of those meetings. What I can tell you is that the S D C methodology that the city has adopted is one where we painstakingly go through the process of looking at the state requirements for adopting the methodology, going through the public process for adopting that, because we have had people in the past who have commented, objected to how we have done it, who have raised, at least informally, legal arguments, saying we're doing it wrong. Jerry is the one who looks, has looked at most of those. We are confident that what the city has done in the past is legal. What we are currently doing today, based on every issue that I have heard of, we are legal. The requirement as to how we spend S D Cs, we have to spend them consistent with our methodology and consistent with the list of projects, but the city has the right, the authority to change that list. So just because something is on the list today and somebody pays an S D C today, doesn't mean that that individual is guaranteed to ever have that particular project constructed. The legal obligation is to construct projects that are on the list, but the city has the ability to change that list going through the state-required process. So I think, I know that doesn't answer most of your questions, but that's.
We'll get into more in a little bit.
Counsel Blanca.
Yeah, we have lots of needs in parks. We have need for capital development of park land that we already bought, and we have dollar needs for maintenance. Really leery of adding parks, new parks that we can't maintain when we can't maintain what we already have. That's kind of called digging the hole deeper. So when I look at all these options, it dawns on me there aren't any good options. I look at the special district and I'm not in favor of creating yet another government entity or taking parks out of underneath the city, and you need voter approval for that, and that would be a tough road to hoe. Bonds, you can't legally use them for O and M, so they're out. User fees, we have raised user fees quite substantially over the years, and they are very regressive, and they hit the poor disproportionately. I don't like those. Philanthropy is nice, and it worked, it's working for Civic, I think. And I don't know how much left there is or how much appetite there is for that. And if you did, it would probably be used for capital projects, not for O and M. Nobody wants to give philanthropic donations to operate parks. They like to build them. So that kind of goes out. Revenue, that's not very sustainable. I think it's really tough to do. It's not a very effective way of raising large sums of money. We don't have very many revenue-producing park entities anyway. Golf course the only one, and maybe some other rec facilities, but they're in recs, not a park. And a levy, I agree, people think it's a tough road to hoe. With the voters in the near term, it's a campaign, it's dollars, it needs volunteers, it needs a message, da, 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 da. That kind of leaves the stormwater park fee that I have a couple of questions about.
So this is adding a parks component to the stormwater fee, not tinkering with the definition of stormwater to include parks?
It's to change the definition to allow the stormwater service to include park maintenance. So it's not changing the definition of stormwater per se.
It's adding.
It's adding, right.
Right. And we're doing that because the stormwater mechanism for collecting fees already exists.
Exactly.
We do that through E web, right? And it's all done administratively, so it's easy, easy of implementation, a lot of costs. You don't need to set up anything new. I think it does need at least a public hearing, maybe more. How is the stormwater calculated? I know it's done through the E web bill, and I know it's, there's different levels of it. Maybe you can explain that and who pays the stormwater fee now? And then, besides that background information, I'm trying to get at is, does it need to be so linked to and tied to the stormwater fee? Can it be slightly different? The stormwater fee tends to be a little regressive for me, and does it, can we do a completely different formula and add it within that context?
Kirk, do you mind fielding that one?
Yeah, the stormwater fee is assessed on the E web bill based upon water service accounts. And the methodology for the stormwater fee is based upon primarily impervious surface with administrative and street fee component to that. So the larger the property, the larger the stormwater bill. We use as an average what we call a medium-sized residential, and that's roughly $12 a month right now. Tweaking the.
And that's flat.
Right. I think to answer your question, how would we, how would we modify the fee structure to add, you know, what you might refer to as a social component or a separate parks fee component to it, I think is significantly more complicated issue than what I think Craig has described here and just simply making the current fee eligible for parks O and M uses. Did that kind of answer?
Yeah, on the end of the round.
Okay. Counsel Brown.
I guess, I think my only other question right now is, you know, in advance of the budget sessions coming up, is what are you, what are you looking to raise per year with the fee increase? If a 1% increase will raise $150,000, what's, what fake numbers have you been playing around with?
We don't have any.
3%? 4%?
Yeah, we don't have anything on an annual basis, but right now, the needs that we just described in this report would equate to roughly a 3% increase in the stormwater rate. And I think that we could, we could actually significantly accomplish a lot of this work that we described here with that increase and raise.
Yeah, that'd be about $450,000 a year. 3%?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just, yeah. And that, that we just took $135,000 out per year for the city hall from public works, so has that been factored into these calculations?
Yeah, the $135,000 for city hall is from the balance available component, so it's not tied specifically to the rate, and there's not a rate increase contemplated specifically for that. It comes essentially from the savings component.
Okay. So this is just funds that you think will be left over every year that can be, can be used for city halls without detriment to the rest of the programs?
Yeah, I think I would state it slightly differently, that we have a targeted two-month operating reserve in each of the funds, and so the operating reserve through the forecast period would be less than two months by some amount.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counsel Taylor.
Thank you. It's hard for me to believe this would only be 12 cents a month. Is there any guarantee?
You just said three times x.
Well, there it says 12 cents.
Yeah, for each 1% rate increase, it would be 12 cents per month on your average residential property.
And what's average? If you say medium-sized. I don't know what my stormwater fee is. I know my E web bill is tremendous, and it's a small house. But does it, was this, this is calculated on the basis of your impervious surface, right? The roof of the house and that driveway?
Yes, without looking at your account, I would, I would suspect your monthly stormwater bill is $12 and some change.
Oh. Well, the whole thing is $260 in a warm month. I really worry about raising anything on that. I know it's, it's getting very difficult for people to pay their utility bills. And if you don't pay, you can't just decide not to pay part of it. If you don't pay at all, then your utilities are cut off, right? And which then leads to some people having to pay a huge amount to get reinstalled and can contribute to people becoming homeless, actually. But, so you're thinking you would start with 12, would there be any guarantee?
I think in answering the previous question, we would be looking at around a 3% to 3.5% rate increase, so that would equate to more like 36.
Oh, you're not, you're not really thinking.
I was just using this as a thumbnail of, for each percent of rate increase, how much that equates in revenue and what's that.
So you're not really saying it's only 12 cents a month? You're saying 36 cents a month.
Right.
To start out.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Evans.
Thank you, Council President. So I like to, I like us to make, look at this in a couple of different ways. One of the things that I noted a couple of years ago when I came on council was the amount of money that we were spending in terms of maintenance with regard to cleaning parks up vis-à-vis illegal homeless camps and other kinds of similar situations that I think at the time was around $300,000, we're like pushing about a half a million now a year in terms of that. Are there any strategies that we, that we are not currently employing, that we could be employing to reduce the cost of maintenance in some areas? I know that you guys have tightened the belt up really well on this, but I think that, you know, one of the ways that we're going to be able to, you know, go back to the voters in some form or fashion of, one of these options is to be able to look at, you know, how we can further be able to reduce the cost of maintenance in the parks. And the second question I have is, you know, kind of just thinking really crazy out of the box, the idea of public-private partnerships with not-for-profit and for-profit entities that, you know, could be long-term leasing agreements between the city and those entities for them to use the parks while still providing, you know, maximum public benefit and access for the public to the parks if we have those kinds of partnerships. So for example, if some private entity wanted to come in and, you know, it has been talked about in the Sheldon area of building track facilities, and that could maybe possibly be done in somewhere like Ascot Park, for example, would we, would there be a way that we could facilitate those kinds of long-term lease agreements that could bring us additional revenue into the, into the kitty?
Well, to answer your last question first, I think there's definitely possibilities for that, and it's one thing that's on our long-term revenue strategies that we'll be exploring throughout the Parks and Rec System Plan Process. To answer your first question, I think we've described quite a few of the efficiencies that we've implemented over the last several years to try to reduce our overall costs, such as utilizing technology and others, the other examples. We've also increased the use of volunteers to try and help with a lot of this work. And so I feel like we're kind of at a plateau now where we've really done, maximized those opportunities quite a bit. However, we're always looking for improvements, and we're looking for other partners and such to leverage, helping us keep those costs down. And in fact, over the next couple of days, I'll be visiting over at the University of Oregon with a nonprofit group called River Keepers to see how they might be able to help us monitor what's going on along the river to alert us in hot spots so that we don't get caught in a situation where we have excessive amounts of garbage or debris along our riverbank. So we're constantly out there trying to build those relationships and trying to make improvements. Did that answer your question?
Yep, I think so.
Is that it?
Yep.
Counsel Evans?
All right, I put myself in the queue because I realized I had another question I didn't ask. Comparing the stormwater fee mechanism to something like a local option levy, does everyone pay the stormwater fee? Do government agencies get exemptions? Nonprofits get exemptions from the stormwater fee the way they would a property tax levy?
If there are exemptions, they are minimal. Matter of fact, not to dive too far into the weeds, but there have been federal cases resolved in the, within the past, I don't know, five, five to 10 years that clarify that the stormwater assessments in cities like Eugene is, is a fee and not a tax. And so federal properties that previously might have been exempt now, now pay into the fee. It applies to developed properties, so vacant lots don't begin paying the assessment until, until they're developed because the methodology is impervious surface. The principle is that undeveloped properties don't, don't have impervious surface until they're developed. So that would be, the primary exempt properties are those that are not developed yet.
So the University of Oregon, the Lane County Fairgrounds, they pay a stormwater fee?
Yes.
So, you know, I think that's a significant piece of information as we think about this. And then in terms of some of the critique that it's, it's difficult to structure something like this to exempt folks who might be low income, it is a very efficient way to raise funds, and that means more of the funds actually go into delivering the service that the public is benefiting from and keeps us from having to think about things like user fees, which are definitely regressive. So I think we kind of need to, you know, we're always trying to balance those needs and values, and we need to kind of think in mind, again, we're kind of faced with the least, you know, the least worst option as opposed to a great option. I definitely agree if we did decide to pursue this stormwater fee idea that we'd want to hold a public hearing on it, I think that would be important. And that is all that I had. Counsel Clark, you're back.
Thank you very much. My questions are again around trying to get my head around some of the bigger questions that we have here with our parks funding and our parks planning. Glenn, I appreciate your answer. I'm, the way I would look at this is our job, the council's job, is policy. And while I appreciate that the city may absolutely be technically and legally complying with the, with the laws, it's written in the letter of the law in all ways. I was asking a question that seems to me like we have a conflict in policy that I would want to make sure we don't. I don't know if it's been explored by anyone or not, and it sounded like it was a conflict to me, so I wanted to learn more about it because it affects our long-term capacity to pay for things. It affects how we're doing business to a degree in this realm right now. And so while we can change the S D C list, I am not an attorney, but I think that would further subject us to suit in that, we don't need to get too far of that, but I, I think that would be more dangerous for us to do. My question is really, and I don't need an answer right now, frankly, you can have Emily or anyone come, get back to me with a greater detail. But we determine. But we determined at the council table as a policy issue that there's a nexus between when people develop industrial and commercial lands and the demands on parks. The reason SDCs exist is so that development pays its way as it goes along. There's going to be people who want to use the parks, so they pay it as they develop it. So it occurs to me then, too, that when we're planning for land to bring into the city, we should be planning for the amount of land that will be demanded by commercial and industrial development because we've already determined that there's a nexus on the demand. But right now, the way we're doing business, we're not calculating any for that purpose. So I'm trying to figure out are we, how we're approaching our nexus because it could affect our SDC charges. It could also affect how much land we bring into the UGP. So I want a better handle on the legal question there. That's what I'm asking. But it also has to, and like I said, I don't need an answer right now. I'd like a more thorough understanding of that later. But it does affect our SDCs, and I want to make sure that that part, at least if we can solve the long-term maintenance question somehow, we can get back into the business of being on track with development the way that we should be and back into the business of acquisition the way that we should be with the schedule we've already planned and set out, and making sure that this, these questions are solved on a larger scale.
Counsel Zlinka.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think getting, I'm loathe to create more parks if we can't figure out how to fix our O&amp;M problem with existing parks. So adding more to the inventory is not, not, that just makes the problem worse unless we try to figure this out. Problem is, there aren't any good solutions. To pick up where we left off, Kurt, so a different formula is doable, it's just complex and needs eWeb's cooperation and, and look at that. I think what we, is that right? So I think what we need is, I need anyway, a primer on how the stormwater fee works a little better. How much is collected? Who pays? What's the formula? What's the collection mechanism for eWeb? What's, what happens if someone doesn't pay? I don't know that anybody's had their, their electricity shut off because they didn't pay their stormwater fee, but so I'd need to know more about that. If we could get some more information about the mechanism and all those kind of issues that have come up over and over again. If we did go down this road, and I'm not saying I'm necessarily going down this road, I think safeguards are really needed on how it gets spent and how the rate increases occur. I definitely think we need at least a public hearing. And I guess, I guess, well, I don't like any of these options really, so I'm thinking of other options, you know. Are there, I mean, there's other options to cut other things to make up more money for doing parks maintenance, and then other mechanisms. I'm almost tempted to say, you know, let's, let's go back almost to the drawing board and try to figure out where, if there's anything else we can do that's a little bit out of the box or, or different ways of getting at this, because I think all these options aren't all that great, don't have high chances of success. Not that any other mechanism might, but just need another little miracle.
So we're just about, oh, Counsel Evans?
So, so taking this back a ways, and let's look at maybe a 15,000-foot perspective on this, you know, Parks doesn't operate in isolation of police and fire and the other parts of the city. And while I, you know, I get where the city manager's coming from in terms of a special district with regards to parks, that that really doesn't, you know, net us or the taxpayers any real tangible benefit. But what could, you know, make a difference in a long-term context would be looking at special districts for fire, which we now have morphed already into a, you know, combined Eugene-Springfield Fire District and probably could go for a regional fire district that could spin that out of our budget. I mean, I know there's compression issues and other things of that nature, but, you know, reducing our portfolio of, you know, services that we give and at the same time, you know, increasing the quality of those services, I think would be extremely attractive to the voters of Eugene. And so I'm not saying this as a question or anything else, just making the statement and throwing the idea out on the table that what I think we need to do is we need to really look at what we do best, what we should be doing, and looking at, you know, exactly what kind of services we should be delivering to the voters and to the community, and what can be better served by other governance mechanisms that, you know, would achieve maximum benefit in all of these areas. So in the area of fire and emergency services, maximizing the benefits that accrue from that, and then having the city focus on the things that we do best in terms of park, rec, you know, administrative services, police services. Just a thought.
So we're just at the end of our work session, and I do not possess the mere skill at summarizing where we're at or getting us to come to a consensus. I don't see that we have consensus right now. We've had a suggested motion to direct the city manager to bring back a proposal with short-term funding strategy, but I am not hearing strong consensus around a particular methodology. I did hear a number of counselors ask about the stormwater fee, and I think Counsel Zlinka kind of summarized, maybe we need a primer on that and eWeb here in the room to answer questions around collection and impact. A couple of us talked about wanting to see what the budget scenario looks like for the next fiscal year. So I think we still need to have additional conversation about this before we land on anything more specific. And looking around the table, I, I see that my fellow counselors agree with me on that. So very much appreciate the good work and answering all of our questions, and hope to see you back at the table with some more information in the near future, maybe after we get our first budget presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.